All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to open up this evening. We have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing for the ordinance to annex property located at 143 Town Pond Road, consisting of 2.00 acres. Lexington County TMS number 007100-06-056. Do I have anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing? I have none. Well, in the public hearing for the ordinance to annex property located at 143 Town Pond Road. At this time, I'd like to open a second public hearing. The ordinance to annex property located along Town Pond Road, consisting of .5 acres, owned by the town of Batesburg-Leesville. This is Lexington County TMS number 007000-01-051. Do I have anyone who would like to speak on this public hearing? If there are none, we will close this public hearing. At this time, I would call to order a meeting from Town Batesburg-Leesville. Thank you, everyone, for being here. It's a regular council meeting. It is May the 8th at 7:00 PM, one minute after Town Hall Complex. Thank you again for being here. I'd like to ask Councilor Prowse if you believe it's an indication, please.
Father, I thank you this evening, as always, for your grace and for your mercy and for your leading us. I pray, Lord, that you keep us on your wing and under your protection. You lead us in the ways that are honorable to you, serve you and chase after you and your purpose. I pray, Lord, that you guide us tonight as we address the business of the town for the benefit of all, Father, whom you serve. In your name I want to pray. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Gambrell.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and the living, liberty, and justice for all.
Thanks so much. I have number four, approval of the agenda. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Prowse.
I approve that we strike item from the agenda for tonight, under new business, item B.
Motion to strike item B from the agenda. Amendment? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Wise. Any discussion? This is new business item B. Any discussion? Mr. Kane?
Mr. Kane, my move to strike that is related to the fact that that resolution does not anywhere affect the business of the town. It is a matter of international policy and politics. Do we have any place in that?
Thank you. Mr. Kane?
Yeah, I totally...
You have the floor, Mr. Kane.
Okay, somehow I totally disagree with you on that for the fact, the simple fact, that if our state or our representative felt that it was important enough to invite the ambassador from Mandova to Batesburg-Leesville, Lexington District 3, School District 3, is making preparations to receive him in the town of Batesburg-Leesville. I don't see why that would be out of line for us to do a resolution ahead of his visit to the state and to the town of Batesburg-Leesville. And I haven't had anybody that's associated with that, including Joe Wilson's office, because I think, Teddy, did you, you said that, we said, we corresponded with them via email, that that was going to be on email. Right, and did she say anything about it being inappropriate for the town to do that? Okay, and then why would we strike it from the agenda when all we have to do is, if you vote against it, we not forward, just vote against it? Why not strike it from the, from the agenda?
Any other discussion? District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yeah.
District 3?
No.
District 4?
No.
District 5?
None.
District 6?
Yes.
District 7?
Yes.
District 8?
No.
Any mayor votes yes, motion passes. I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, move that we approve the agenda.
A motion by Mr. Prowse, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wise. Any discussion? District 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3? 4?
None.
5?
None.
6?
Yes.
7?
Yes.
8?
Yes.
Any mayor votes yes, motion passes. Adoption of the minutes for the regular council meeting, April 10th, 2023. Do you have a motion to adopt those minutes? Ms. Lemon, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hall, any discussion? District 1?
Yes.
2?
Yeah.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Crazy.
6?
Yes.
7?
Yes.
8?
Yes.
Any mayor votes yes, motion passes. Adoption of the council work session minutes from April 26th, 2023. Do you have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Mr. Gambrell, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lemon, any discussion? District 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
No.
4?
Yes.
5? It's a council workstation from April 26th. Is the motion?
I ain't agree with a lot of their stuff, no.
It's, it would just be only minutes, ma'am.
No.
Okay. 6?
Yes.
7?
Yes.
8?
Yeah.
And mayor votes yes, motion passes. Mayor, report. Next regular council meeting will be June the 12th, 2023. Council committees report. Central Midlands Council, Bob Hall.
Central Midlands Council did meet on April the 27th. Major issues discussed, financially due issues with format of the dashboard, both format and errors on the corporate financial report. Those items referred to the next meeting. Approval was given to two items associated with the 2027 tip. Major one was increased funding for Lower Saluda River. There was a presentation by Darren Ledbetter of SCDO-T. Gave an update on SCDO projects. Unfortunately, those were urban projects only, and there were no updates for rural projects such as Pond Branch and Willis Street. Had a presentation by Mr. Espinoza. Gave a presentation on the regional bike and pedestrian master plan, which they are beginning to work on. And we had additional, the executive director reported additional losses and actions taken to clean out the existing building. Our next meeting will be June 1st.
Thank you, sir. And EPAC, Councilmember Prowse.
EPAC meeting scheduled for April was canceled due to no business to cover. Our next scheduled meeting is July 19th.
Thank you. Comic Advisory Committee, Councilman Kane.
I'm kind of lucky to even give a report, you know? We've, we've worked on transportation for the community, but if we're going to come here and get blindsided with stupidness, you know, with people's petty, personal political stuff, you know, it, it makes no damn sense to, we need to figure out if we want to do private transportation or not. That's what, that's, that's my concern. Now, Teddy, are you going to let me get my report or are you going to keep talking?
No, sir, you, you have the floor, sir. Give your report.
Okay.
About, about the comic. Thank you.
Okay. So, now, Teddy, are we, are we still on, on board with bringing transportation to the community?
I think a lot of, excuse me, I think a lot of that. I know there's some upcoming meetings between the county and the comic.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about from the, from the county. I know, I, I mean, I sit on the board, so I know that the county and Debbie and a lot of us, we've worked on it. But I don't want to come to some agreement with the, with the comic, and then we come here and then we have some stupid stuff going on on the council where we decide, well, you know, somebody has a political opposition to providing transportation, we don't do it. So are we still on, on, on track to?
Again, I know there's some upcoming meetings with the county, the comic, and municipalities, and the county has got to target.
I know, but the, the county has always provided a large portion of funding that goes in, and, and there's a question about whether the, how much
the county's willing to do at this point towards this transportation. So I think getting those numbers and understanding and bringing that back for discussion would be the next step.
Okay.
And I know those meetings are scheduled to come up here soon, and I've actually been on those email invites.
Okay, so what, I mean, you know, we're not spinning our wheels here and doing crazy stuff. But, so now, there is another option for, for the comic. They have a contract with Enterprise Rent-A-Car. And so they have a small mini bus that is kind of a turnkey operation that would be kind of perfect for circulating through the town. And then you don't have that requirement to go out to the county unless we wanted to. But we could circulate, we can get two, two of those buses that would circulate through the town to, to move people. But again, we want to make sure that, you know, we're not doing stupid stuff as, as a council where we putting things out in the public that we want to do, then, you know, we get blindsided.
Well, I think once there's numbers and those conversations happen, then that information will be there for us to come back and discuss with council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Joint Municipal Water and Sewer Commission, the big news there is the SEIP rural structure granted them $10 million for their side of our water project. So that's $10 million on our side and $10 million on their side. That's a massive win for our, our project moving forward. They can, the next meeting is coming up this week, and it, the budget is the main item on the agenda. And item C, BL Chamber of Commerce update. Mike Taylor, President. Mr. Mike.
Good evening. The Peculiar Legion Chamber and Midland's Tech College, each year in April, invite the honor graduates, our potential honor graduates, students to come to our meeting, along with their parents. And they came in April in our meeting in Milan. It was a true, I enjoyed it. It's always a rewarding event for me. But what was so unique about it, it's, I'm sorry. What was so unique about it, and I share this with them, is when I was addressing the letters go out to the students and the parents, I realized that I had watched many of these children, it's happened some of past this year, watched many of those children grow up, and I watched the parents grow up in this community. And that's good to see and witness, because it does show that we are retaining some of our youth and support, and they, they were finding good jobs. But it was, I hope the parents enjoyed it. I thought it was a good event. We hosted, the, the Ox on the Ridge hosted a, I think it was 29th of April at Batesburg-Leesville, a lease-a-son. We invited the artists and the community company. I think we had roughly 60 something plus those that, that put it on. So we were able to gather information about them, addresses what particular part of art they involved in, and so we had that information. We'll be able to hopefully have some events coming up in the future. Also, Ox on the Ridge has given the artists in the area campuses to paint and their, not like that size. And we'll have those at the South Town Folk Festival to sell to raise money for Ox on the Ridge. The Chamber is working with Ox on the Ridge again on Peachtree 23 Highway sale, which comes up June the 2nd, which is Friday, and Saturday, the 3rd. As you well know, if you want to find a treasure and a bargain to go down 23, if you're in a hurry and want to go somewhere, it's down Highway 1. It will be, it will be going up that day from 7:30 on. So I believe that's about it. We have an auction coming up in August, which will be on the 19th. That's our largest event and our fundraiser. So as soon as we, the Folk Festival is over, Peachtree 23 and so forth, we'll get on that. Any questions?
Mr. Kane?
Wait, I have a question. Now, do we have any international businesses in town?
We have businesses that deal with international.
That's home and, and?
I don't know.
That's affiliated, so you, which is not an international hometown company?
It's not here, really.
I believe it's Chinese, Japanese, or?
And so, as far as the, the Chamber is concerned, do you deal with global interests as, as a Chamber?
I'll answer it this way. We do not get into political matters at the Chamber.
I'm not asking about political, man. I'm talking about, do, do we do business internationally? Are we open to international commerce in the town of Batesburg-Leesville?
No commerce.
International commerce, right? Okay, I'm just wondering if we, if we going to be isolates in this? And if we don't do anything that has anything to do with international commerce? But we do, right? We actually have international business located in our town, right? Okay, all right, thank you.
One other thing you want to be interested to, to make, make the comment on. We had 39 students that received some type of associate's degree. 10 of them received an associate of arts degree, which means they're going to school and college as students. And others got college credits, not, not ever mentioned, I think so.
Might, I might commend you for that, because we, we did follow up more with the Lexington District 3 on that, because you and I have been going back and forth on it a little bit. And I do want to commend the Midland's Tech program in the school, because even if the kids don't get their, their associates, they do take classes and they do have, and it's pretty robust, robust program in, in Lexington 3, so I do commend you for that.
They have financing, I'll thank you just.
Oh, yes.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, Mr. Mike. Appreciate it. Mr. Judy, do we have any public comment this evening? We have none. Item 8, unfinished, unfinished business. This will be for the second reading for the ordinance to annex property located at 143 Town Pond Road, consisting of 2.00 acres. This is TMS, TMS number 71100-06-056. Do I have a motion to adopt second reading?
So moved.
Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gambrell, any discussion? District 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
Did you three votes, no?
4?
Yes.
5? Ma'am?
I'm not sure, because I wasn't here, sir. I'm not sure if I was going to vote on it or not.
Okay. 6?
Yes.
7?
Yes.
8?
Yes.
Any mayor votes yes, motion passes. Item B is the second reading of ordinance to annex property located along Town Pond Road, consisting of .5 acres. This is owned by the town of Batesburg-Leesville, Lexington County. TMS number 007000-01-051. Do I have a motion to adopt the second reading of this ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wise, any discussion? District 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3? 4?
Yes.
5? District 5?
Yeah.
District 6?
Yes.
7?
Yes.
8?
Yes.
Any mayor votes yes, motion passes. New business. Item A, council vote to excuse the absence from last month's meeting for Councilmember Mitchell. Do I have a motion to excuse the absence?
So moved.
Mr. Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lemon, any discussion? District 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
District votes yes.
4?
Yes.
5? I'm saying, and 6?
Yes.
7?
Yes.
8?
Yes.
Any mayor votes yes, motion passes. Item C, resolution, resolution suspending section 9-2-8, the Town's code of ordinances for summer concert in College Park, as presented in your packet. Do I, do I motion to suspend the, the section 9-2-8?
Yes.
Ms. Lemon, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wise, any discussion?
Teddy, what is, what is this purpose of this?
Okay, so section 9-2-8 of the code of ordinances is related to the possession of open containers while on public streets and sidewalks. For the event, we're going to have multiple food vendors that are on site. I think a slushy truck or something like that. But this would actually allow a, a vendor to come in to be able to provide and sell a beer for the concert. To be able to do that, we would need to suspend this particular section for that, for that evening within the designated area of College Park.
Would the church have a, maybe by market?
So at this point, there's been no communication with the church with regards to this. Now, one, one point that was brought up prior to the meeting is that it would have to be outside of 300 feet of the church. So what I would, what I would point you to is the map that is enclosed. That boundary would certainly be within the 300 feet. So we may need to consider moving that line maybe off the back of the Midland's Tech building and, and taking it a little further away outside that 300 feet. So just for clarification purposes with regards to the map, we can redo it, but imagine that line being kind of straight across off the back of Midland's Tech.
Any other discussion?
Do we, Mr. Hall, do we take the same action for the Poultry Festival?
No, sir, this has not been done in the past with regards to the Poultry Festival. And, and it has not been done in the past with regards to Ox on the Ridge and the concert that's been done out there on Oak Street.
Do they have with you?
Mr. Kane, Mr. Hall have the floor. Uh, Mr. Kane, if you'll hold, Mr. Hall, so.
And this event will generate both H tax and business license revenues?
Certainly, for the vendor.
The access, this vendor will not, because it's not serving food. Are you planning to leave?
No, so, so any food vendors or, or beverage vendors that are on site would certainly have to, to pay hospitality terms. Our hospitality tax would be collected by the vendors.
Well, the, the point is, is this going to be specifically a beer vendor selling food? Or is it just going to be a?
At this point, if, and I'm going to say this, if we can find a vendor, and that's an if, but the first step would be having permission to even do it. I know we have done some reaching out to see what vendors are out there with regards to beverage sales, and we've, a lot of them have wanted the alcohol provided, and they just come and serve it. So the question's going to be is whether or not we can even find a vendor that's turnkey. So that's something we're even working on at this point.
Wait, ten minutes.
Mr. Hall, are you finished? I think, Mr. Kane?
This, this is something that we're doing?
This is a town event, yes, sir.
Why don't we want to sell beer?
We would not be selling it. It would be an option for people at the event.
Well, why would we do that if we don't do it for, for Poultry Festival and?
Again, that, that Poultry Festival is not our event. This would be our event.
I'm saying, but no other event that in town encourages drinking?
Well, nobody said that we're encouraging, it just provides the option. I mean, if you, if you go to the Ice House Amphitheater in Lexington, which is a town-owned facility, and it's town-owned events that they put on there, they bring in, they have outside vendors that come in, and, and they have that option there. It's up to you whether you choose to take advantage of that or not.
So my, my next question would be the question about liability. Should somebody overindulge?
Sir, can you mind, I, I've done some research on this. I've called Lexington and other places that do it. They would have to have, they would have to have an insurance policy specifically related to doing the venue at that event, and we would have to be listed as an additional insured on that insurance policy.
And they would have to have an event license through?
Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue, and we want to check with our insurance.
Yes.
We, we, we looked at all that for game, you know?
Okay, so, but, but you know, if, if you was to live on the other side, something bad happened, right? Right, you, you going to deep pockets, right? You going to deep pockets. So we, we do have some exposure. Okay, I'm done.
So, so can I ask a question?
Mr. Hill?
So if the Poultry Festival comes up and says, we want to have alcohol on the premises, will they be allowed to have it? If they have everything in order, would they be allowed to have the alcohol?
And I cannot speak specifically to the Poultry Festival. I do know that, I, I do know there's a vendor on Main Street, or not a vendor, there is a business on, two now, on Main Street. Well, one on Railroad and one on Main Street that, that allows people the opportunity to come there and purchase alcohol for consumption.
Yeah, but you're talking about a liquor store. So, but I'm just saying, this is not a liquor store. This is a vendor that you're going to have on the premises that's going to have alcohol. So I'm just asking you, if the Poultry Festival and Ridge Art and all of them come to you with the proper papers to have alcohol on their premises, would you all allow?
There, of the other events that have had alcohol at those events, they are not contracting or hiring a alcohol vendor to come in. It's businesses. So, for example, Homeland Craft Beer and Wine on Main Street and the party shop, Fox's, the party shop on Railroad, they just have their business open and operating. It's not something that the Poultry Festival has specifically brought in for that event. With regards to Ox on the Ridge, the concert on Oak Street, they are not contracting or bringing the root seller in specifically for the sale of alcohol.
But if they did, I'm not saying they do. I know they don't, because I, I, I go everywhere every 50 years. But anyway, I'm just saying, if they did come to you with this proposition, would you do it?
So certainly, I think there's a twofold thing here. There's this request related to our event. I think there's conversation that if we want to have the option there for events within our community, whether it's put on by us or other organizations within our town, I think we need to, as a group, address the, the current ordinance and whether we want to look at that moving forward. But due to the sake of time for this particular, we've come with a specific request for our event that we're putting on. But yes, I think there's further conversation that we're going to need to have about the ordinance of the town and what we would and would not want to allow moving forward with regards to events in our community as it relates to our ordinance.
Okay, so, so you have the proper distance from the church?
Right.
Right?
Department of Revenue.
Department of Revenue.
Insurance policy related to it.
So the insurance policy agrees. Now, if somebody go out there and act stupid, because you know how people get when they drink?
Well, that's, well, that's part of why you have vendors versus BYOB. BYOB, you can't really control the amount of consumption that someone's doing, but when you have a?
People still going to bring their own bottles. They're going to be real.
Well, that's something the police chief and, and also talked about to this point, is even for our event or other events, we've got to, we've got to have eyes and watch for people bringing their own coolers in. The reason you go with a vendor, they're licensed, they're insured, and it's up to them to regulate the possibility of someone overindulging. And, and, and that becomes their liability for this.
And, Mr. Kane?
I have one other question. Now, with the other vendors that are existing vendors on Main Streets, now those are for consumption inside those facilities, not to be walking outside with, with alcohol, right? So they consume what they're going to consume inside?
I, I think what you'll find is, is the sale is done there, and people tend to stay right there at those businesses.
Right, because they can't drink, they can't have open container outside the business.
I, I'm not going to say they, they, they're all drinking within the building, within the building, but they're, they tend to be right there within the area of that business.
But you're not supposed to have open container, right?
Technically, yes.
Technically or legally? No, no, don't, don't worry about it.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Hall, if you may. There are two kinds of alcoholic beverage license. One is on-premise consumption, which would be the license held by Beer and Wine.
which would be the license held by beer and wine. Uh, the town needs to define whether or not they can have an outdoor, what's the limits of their premise, uh, if they decide to have a sidewalk, uh, situation, uh, chairs and tables. The other one is for off packages for off-premise consumption. I believe, uh, the one on Fox's has both licenses, on-premise and off, so.
Well, and I think, I think what's in front of us right now, Mr. Hall, is a resolution to just waive for the one day.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
District three votes no.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
I'm concerned, I have a concern about it getting out of control, so.
We're in the middle of a vote, guys. Alright, okay. Ms. Biddle. Ma'am?
I don't know, I, I, I got concerned, bro, I'm not sure if I want, I'm not even voting.
Okay, no. Thank you. Uh, district six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes, uh, resolution passes. Approval of the guidelines, policies and procedures related to the hospitality tax grant program as presented in your packet. Um, do I have a motion, uh, to approve those guidelines, policies and procedures?
So moved.
Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gambrell, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes no.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
And this is what?
Um, this is approval of guidelines, policies and procedures related to the hospitality tax grant program, which we discussed at the workstation. District, um, we have a motion and a second. Uh, district five?
Yeah.
District six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Sir?
No.
And mayor votes yes, motion passes. Managers report, Mr. Lucky.
Alright. To start off, uh, the Bay Harbor Leesville kicking off summer concert, College Park, as a reminder, is Saturday, June third. Um, we are fortunate, we're gonna have a local artist and high school student that opened the evening at, beginning at five-thirty PM, her name is Emma Rogers. Uh, she will be doing hour and a half performance, and followed by that will be Cody Web and he'll begin at seven-fifty PM. There will be food truck vendors on site to sell food. This should be a great evening for the community and we encourage everyone to come out and enjoy the show. Um, the Peak Street twenty-three yard sale will be June second and June third. Um, one of the things that we've always offered in the past is, uh, as council members or employees of the town, with regards to our parking lot out here, if you would like to have a space out here for the Peak Street twenty-three, if you would, just email myself or, or Jay, just let us know, uh, 'cause we certainly wanna make sure that employees or council members would have an opportunity to set up out here in the parking lot. Um, and unless anyone objects, we're gonna waive the yard sale permits for the event that day. Um, project updates with regards to the infiltration and implosion project, contractors have been working on the Davis Pond site, finalizing the last remaining CCTV work on the main collection line coming into the wastewater treatment plant. We held an onsite meeting with the contractors and engineers to discuss the Beaver Down issues and swamp area that, uh, our main trunk lines run through. This area is currently not accessible for equipment due to the swampy conditions. We discussed forming a right-of-way path into the woods swamp area and placing down these large mats, uh, that will allow them to be able to take their vehicles and equipment back to, to access those lines and manholes. Uh, we have discussed, due to the, it was such a wet winter, uh, and the swampy conditions, we've talked about kind of waiting a little bit in the summer to see if we can get one of these thirty-day droughts or forty-day droughts to come in and help to dry that area up, uh, to make it more accessible for the contractors. Uh, since our last meeting, uh, piggyback off what, what the mayor said earlier, uh, we did receive notification since our last meeting that the Rural Infrastructure Authority, uh, awarded us the ten million dollar grant in skip funding as well as joint municipal towards their portion. Uh, with that, our projected cost for the portion of the project connecting from joint municipal to town is seventeen million nine hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars, which means that would leave us seven million nine hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred that we would be responsible for. And again, that's based on cost estimates at this point, not vehicle. However, we are in the running for potentially another four million dollars, um, in additional grant funding through a, a merchant contaminants program that we've applied for. Uh, they have stated that we should know on that in about another month and a half or so, we're gonna be awarded that four million. If we do receive that, that would leave us about three point nine million dollars towards our portion of the project. Uh, myself and our engineers, um, have registered that we'll be attending a mandatory workshop with the Rural Infrastructure Authority on May thirty-first at the Columbia Convention Center. Uh, this is for all the wardies and the engineers. The contractor for the liquid chemical feed project mobilized to the wastewater treatment plant today to begin work on this project. Their first step will be to get the underground utilities located and then locate the underground water lines before they start pouring the slab and, and erecting the chemical feed building. The financial update, uh, the general fund checking account ended the month at one million six hundred three thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars. Um, and the total of all nine utility funds was at one million six hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. The total for all utility funds was three million six hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars. And the American Rescue Plan funds, um, one million five hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-three, and the twenty-twenty-one infrastructure revenue fund, uh, is still at nine hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The hospitality tax checking account ended the month at nine hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, bringing the total of all funds to six million two hundred and sixty-five thousand and nine dollars. The next sheet is the month ending April, uh, side by side from two thousand fifteen until two thousand twenty-three. The general fund ended the month with operating revenues at seventy-five percent at three billion nine hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and operating expenses at eighty-six percent, four million five hundred two thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Utility fund, operating revenues are at eighty-five percent, two million eight hundred twenty-four thousand seventy-one dollars, and operating expenses are at eighty-two percent, two million seven hundred seventeen thousand four hundred twenty dollars. The victim's assistance fund revenues are at a hundred and sixteen percent at eight thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars, and operating expenses are at eighty-five percent, six thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars. The hospitality tax fund ended at ninety-nine percent and operating revenues at six hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred and three dollars, and operating expenses are currently at thirty-nine percent, two hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars.
Teddy, I have.
Mr. Kane?
So, now, we, we, we are very excited about the ten million dollars and the other grant money, is that federal money?
It is.
And most of the grants that we get to do water sewer and big projects are federal money, right?
Most of it all starts at federal and comes down.
So, we, we do have a national interest in, in not being, well, I mean, I'm, I'm just, you know, when we, we do stupid stuff and we say that we're not, you know, a part of the, uh, one thing is national, one thing is, is, is public, it don't have anything. When you are going out there, in which you are, to ask somebody like, uh, Congressman Clyburn to help with, you know, a one-point-two, two-point-three million dollar project, that's national. And the project that we're working on is an international, um, interest to the world. So for us to sit here and then, you know, make stupid votes on certain things because somebody has some type of, 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 of political, uh, agenda or bin makes no sense. The, most of the money that we up here pounding our chest about came from the feds, which is national. Thank you.
Ms. Lucky, thank you so much. Item left in executive session, we have three items this evening, received legal advice and discussion related to contractual matters with waste management, received legal advice for discussion concerning the old rescue squad building, and received legal advice and discussion related to contractual matters with Ridge Spring. I have a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Mr. Gambrell, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lemon, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes, we are in executive session. Alright, then this time I'll entertain a motion to return to regular council meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Lemon? Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three? Two?
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, district two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five? Six?
Yeah.
Seven? Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes, we are back in regular session, thank you. Uh, possible, possible actions by council that fall to executive session.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prowse?
Uh, I'm gonna, we, um, approve the contract as presented at the end of executive session regarding waste management, um, I guess the extension of that contract as presented in executive session.
Thank you. Uh, I have a motion of a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall, motion and a second to approve the contract with waste management as presented in executive session. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kane?
Uh, Ms. Lucky, I did do some research, um, based on the information that you presented to, uh, to council, and whereas I am not, um, excited about building for, uh, an increase in our, um, waste, uh, management contract, I do realize that it may not be popular for the, uh, my constituents, but it is, uh, the best deal possible, so I do appreciate your diligence in that, thank you.
And Mr. Kane, any other discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yeah.
Three?
Yeah.
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And, uh, mayor votes yes, motion passes. Any other motions, uh, from executive session?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prowse?
Um, we direct the town attorney to, uh, begin the process of, um, I don't wanna say this, um, of pursuing legal remedy to, uh, to, you know, acquire, based on historical information, uh, the old rescue squad building and the assets there.
I have a motion by Mr. Prowse of a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gambrell, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Kane?
Very concerned about, um, reclaiming the property, um, at E M S and, you know, and I hope that, um, you know, we, we talked about, I mean, let me rephrase that, we, we have to, uh, determine whether that, uh, organization is defunct, we have to define what defunct means, and, you know, I'm very, very concerned about acquiring, uh, another building without it being specified exactly what that building is gonna be used for. If we take, go through all the legal maneuvering to get it back, what are we gonna use it for? Let's put that out there first before we, um, actually obtain the, the property, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kane, any other discussion? District one?
Uh, yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes no.
Four?